We will start the work session, 5:15.
Okay, so the work session is to talk about whatever the next step in the budgetary process is going to be. Each of the department heads reconfigured their department budget into programs, which was distributed to you. The budget figures are the same as the line item figures, they just decided for the program activities that they undertake, how that money should be allocated. Some members of the board have expressed to me a desire to continue with this process, some have expressed a desire to get on with the process of making decisions about the budget. I'm at your service, so we want to do whatever you want me to do. Just need to know.
Well, I think obviously, starting last fall, we...
And I think there was five of the current members on the board then that we said we'd like to do it a little differently.
Just didn't know what that meant, so I kind of picked this process.
Right.
And I get a sense it isn't exactly what your expectations were.
Right.
It isn't what I thought, and I'd like to get on with the regular budget stuff, but that's just me.
And to be honest with you, I'm trying to figure out why we're trying to... And I understand, look at it being frugal and everything else, but we're trying, at this point, with the city, we're trying to fix something that's not broken. And I gotta ask a question. Why? Can I under... I mean, what is... I mean, all I hear is, is, I guess we don't want to end up to where we're... I just don't... I'm having a hard time with it. What's broken here with the budget? Is it... What do we want to do here? What do we... What is our goal here? Is our goal to save money? Is our goal here to get more money so we can fix streets? What is our goal here to... What we want to do here? And because all we're doing right now is, I'll tell you what we're doing to the city and to the department heads and everybody else, we're causing more discord, which this city does not need. This city is riddled with discord throughout districts, throughout people. It's causing problems, and that's all we're doing. We've got disgruntled employees because they're wondering, well, what's next? What's... It's crazy what we're doing here. And I just am having a hard time with it. So, just me. I don't know about anybody else, but I...
But aren't the taxpayers' voices to be heard? And we're representative, that's why we were put in these jobs. You know, if people come to us and ask questions...
Okay, I agree. I get that. I get that, Paul, but where are they? Where is everybody? Where... I have not... Nobody has asked me a question, and I'm out there all over the place. I have not got... Maybe two people have asked me questions about what you're doing here with the budget and how you're... I don't... I don't see all the people. And it's just like anybody anywhere else, it's just a few that get all the attention and make all the waves.
And this is the time, another normal procedure, Sue would be putting in a call for budget proposals to department heads. And we usually give them maybe more time than they need to prepare them. So perhaps what we could do is initiate that process, shorten the preparation time for them, so that you have more time to deal with the proposals that are being presented to you. That would give you a better period. But it's still going to be a process of calling them in, saying justify your request, making a decision to increase it, decrease it, let it stay the way it is. This process was supposed to put that decision in some context of priorities. And the next step would be to go through the program. Those were the goals that I kind of figured we were talking about. And you decide what your priorities are and where the programs fit in those goals. And then, you know, is infrastructure improvements, you know, more important than promoting livable neighborhoods through code enforcement? I don't know. We tend to think all of what we do is important, and we try and do it all well, but if you're allocating resources and you have to take from one to give to another because you want to do more, you kind of have to... You needed a basis for that decision. But that can be done by a discussion around the table as the... As the budgets are presented to you. It doesn't have to be put in as structured.
You know, I can tell you, it's coming on the board, you know, right at the beginning very well, really right at the budget time and stuff, you know. It's being new, and, you know, there's a lot of new members here, it's just not knowing. You know, and if you don't know, how do you vote for something that you don't understand or you don't know? That's just asking for a rubber stamp then, and I... You know, not that I'm questioning anybody's, you know, ability or anything here, but maybe it is just understanding for the people here on this board to know what's going on and how to go about it.
Well, how long you been... You've been on the board now?
Two years, I guess.
You've been there a couple of budget, you know?
Right.
So what more information do you need to feel good about it or for your constituents to feel good about it? I don't... I... That's my question.
I think what you got tonight, whether we use it for this process or not, is going to be helpful, because it expresses how the money's being spent in service delivery to the citizens, which is not something you get when you see Gary's line item for equipment repairs. I mean, it's hard to convert that to how the citizenry benefits from the equipment repairs, and his allocation of those costs across these functional categories tells you that.
Because we didn't get this last year, anything like this.
This is all new this year.
Right.
Last year, you saw line items, chemicals, repair, vehicles, whatever.
Right.
But you really didn't know what the cost was of providing the services.
So this is progress.
I think each of these cases, the directors have done a good job.
Well, this is progress to see where the money's going.
Right.
If there's a question that there's... The money's... Nobody knows where the money's going or how we're doing it. It's all right here on all reports, that's what everybody got. It's a little bit... It's a lot different than what we went through last year, so...
But this isn't 100%, but it's close, right?
Well, it's their best professional estimate of how the resources you've given them are spread across the work that they perform.
Right.
No, it's not.
But it's close.
No, these are great, yeah. These are fantastic.
I think these are good.
As far as the stepping stone goes, at least, seeing where it's going. I mean, to me, when discussing... Or when this was being discussed, starting the process early, this is kind of what I thought was going to happen, not necessarily to talk about trying to change how we do our budget, but more or less just look into each and individual department sooner.
Right.
And that may take multiple meetings, but, you know, maybe it takes three or four meetings to discuss, to get really deep into the fire department or the police department or the tourism. It really doesn't matter, but that's kind of... This was more the direction that I thought this would be heading.
And if you decide it's necessary to reduce expenditures, then you can look at this and understand that if you tell... Gary's here, I'm using him as an example, that you need to take 10% out of your budget, where do you want it to come from? Do you want to do less mowing? Do you want to do, you know, let some street lights stay dark instead of fixing them when they need to be fixed? And that was kind of the point I made about across the board, budget decreases.
You can't.
You can't do that.
Right.
You gotta say, this is the 10% that I'd like to see you save money on. You can do it, but it doesn't really... It means you lose 10% of what you might value most highly, at the same time what you didn't value as high. So we can proceed kind of with this information.
Over here, we might as well.
Yes, well, we're going to proceed. You didn't want to go through all this stuff.
No.
I personally don't.
But I think that you'll find that when you get into here, there's not a lot of fat in any of this budget. So, and nothing against anybody that wants to do something else, there's not a lot of money to do the things that some people want to do. I mean, the money's just not there.
Now, recall that these are just the general revenue expenditures. This is the $1,008,000 we spent on operations that aren't cemetery, aren't van, aren't water sewer.
If we were to start looking at the budget earlier, in the same vein Bryant was talking about, when can we get the proposed budgets back?
We can start off some of them as soon as our next meeting.
Okay.
I mean, there are some that... The administrative budget.
Detail breakdown like this, submit them to the alderman earlier so we can chew on it. Let's do that.
Okay.
Let's ask them to submit them as soon as possible.
So what we'll do is, I'll give you... We'll prepare a line item budget like you've always seen.
Right, copy that.
You can take that line item budget, it's a safer administrative, and then kind of look at it in the context of this breakdown, community development, I think, I can say, he's still here. They could get his rate. I mean, we have some that we could do, I think, in two weeks.
Perfect.
Others, water sewer takes a while. Streets is a little more complicated.
So we can start doing a tiered system?
Yeah, we can do it. So we'll just... Take the low hanging fruit first.
Does that work?
While the larger departments are working on preparing their request for substantive meetings, and if we do that, I think, you know, we ought to be able to add our 5:15 per every two week meetings, you know, we could get it done well ahead of time.
The problem I had last year was, being first time, we had people come in, we asked them questions, and then if we tried to go back, everybody said, no, you had your chance that night. That's what I didn't like. It was a one-shot ask question, if you didn't know the question to ask.
Well, there are no rules. So it's up to you to decide what you want to do.
Well, everybody was saying, once we did it, let's say, his budget, we couldn't go back if we thought of something like Ron. And we didn't because we didn't have something like this.
I think we can accommodate that concern.
Okay.
With the time we have right now, and we have to get it done. All right, so let's move on to another topic related to the budget, so this is supposed to be talking about the budget. I just passed out to you a survey that I've done through the Missouri municipal, what other cities do for reserves. Dave White found a article where the Government Financial Officers Association recommends a minimum of 16.7% of your annual revenue as a reserve account. You will see as you go through the responses I got from the cities, most of them tried to do something better than that. Troy Howard was our financial consultant for our last pre-finance on the certificates of participation, sent me the Standard and Poor's 47-page document on how they look at it. So, yeah, I didn't send you that. So...
What do the bond people...
Well, I don't... That's why she sent me their thinning, and I read it, and I still don't know what they want. But here's what I do know, I consulted with Sue before the meeting. Our annual operating budget for the general fund is $1,087,000. She currently has and will at the end of the year have a $1,005,000, give or take, in reserve. I mean, we're way above any of these figures.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, we're pushing 100%, we're in the almost 90%. We have about one year's operating cash in reserve. I don't know what more they want. I don't know how you can get much better than that. We don't have a cash crunch, barring, as Sue said, some unexpected calamity where the sales tax revenue falls off the chart. We should go into the end of the year with that money in the bank and look forward to building on it next year, or spending some of it. Because it looks like this, I mean, 50% would be a healthy reserve, according to kind of what everybody else is doing, what the General Finance Officers Association recommends. Now, my sense from the bond people was that they didn't like the fact that it was the same... It's not growing, you know, it's been the same for many years. That was three years ago.
But if the percentage is there...
It has grown in the last few years.
But if the percentage is there...
They were looking at the trend. But the trend now, since then, has been upward.
Upward.
To the point that we now have almost a year's worth of operating cash in the bank.
Yeah, it's just in my bank account.
Well, your operating budget is a little bit less.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, I get my revenues a little bit less. I think I asked this before, and excuse me for forgetting, but you say our excess on like last year's budget was like $80,000 that would go into this reserve? Or how much is going into this reserve every year?
Well, it's going to $200,000 in three years, about.
And we would have had more last year, but when we realized we had a surplus, we decided to knock out some streets rather than put it in. So we got a bunch of streets done last year.
Oh, yeah. Good showing. $80,000 wasn't enough.
Well, that didn't come out of the...
More than that.
Yeah, that's out of the other fund.
That didn't come out of the...
Oh, that's right, it's the capital.
Capital improvements.
Third street? When was Ridge...
That was two years ago.
When was Ridge?
The last row, we did Ridgeway and Market.
Right.
And then we took extra money, but as a...
We did Park.
We did Park.
Because we had some asphalt left, right?
Well, we had extra money, we added to it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because we had about $200,000, which we got this year, we're going to do... That's another thing this board, we need to start thinking about, we're coming into summer, what's next? Because we're going to asphalt some streets, we're going to do some streets here this summer.
Is Gary going to go through like he did last year and give us like a priority, Gary?
Sure. It is the middle of June, gentlemen and lady.
Well, that's what I say, and we're... We need to start thinking about that.
And we know we have about the same amount of money this year as we had last year. We're going to do Chadwell line. You know, with our resources, I don't know the bits will be... I've got a report on that, but, you know, that will determine how much we need to... With the $75,000, we have earmarked for that already, we know it's going to be probably double that. Then the question is, okay, if we're going to do that, we have this bid, do you want to go ahead and do the overlay with Chadwell or are we... Do you have the railroad tracks?
I don't think you need to do it to the railroad tracks, just to the bridge.
To the bridge, Rich.
Right.
Does anybody know what the price of asphalt is compared to last year?
Gary said no, but I don't think it's up.
It's not up, Gary? Okay.
Yeah. Thank you. Water prices have been good, you know, they balanced that road there.
Yeah, water prices have dropped, so I wouldn't say asphalt...
It's always falling out. So basically, our reserves compared to just about everybody that you surveyed is considerably higher percentage-wise.
Yes.
It's definitely a good thing, but at one point, at what point do we think we have too much and then we're just taking taxpayer dollar for nothing? I mean, we need to start spending, either spending or trying to give back, or, you know, we have this increase, or we've... Not increase, sorry, this extra revenue apparently going into this reserve funds, but then we're going to go tax the taxpayers to try to increase our funds to pay for salaries. I don't really understand, if we have this much of an increase compared to everybody else, why did we go out there and do that? It wasn't necessary. It doesn't seem like it was necessary if we're bringing in this much extra revenue.
We have to sustain that, it's something that's going to happen every year.
It could be sustained, but if it's...
I mean, that would run out if you tried to do that, Bryant, you know, that's not a question.
It seems to me like there's plenty there as far as what it could have been two years ago, or, you know, as far as going into these reserves.
I understand your concerns, but that's a done deal, and we're moving forward with that. I don't know.
Well, I mean, it may be, but there's no reason to sit here and pretend like it can't be repealed if we can find money, you know? I don't understand what's the reason.
I don't even understand why that was even brought up. Why you even said that?
Well, I said what? I've had plenty... I've had several of people, several people have came to me, and no, has it been a majority of our constituents? No, not necessarily, but I've had several constituents come to me that are very upset about it, Paul. We had one, we had a lady come in here and chew us out over it.
Well, you know what, Bryant?
So it's not... To not ask questions about it at least, I think, is naive. I mean, at least allow me to ask the question, you know, no one has to agree here with me, that's fine, but at least let me address, bring it up.
If we have a major expense, say a water line collapses, a sewer line collapses, and I'm not talking about just a couple hundred feet of it, I'm talking about we have to go in and replace a major utility that we maintain and stuff, where do we get the money?
Water sewer had their own reserve. And so, as an example, the ultraviolet system going out, that ended up costing, you know, $200,000.
But I mean...
That reserve was available for that. The cash that we have, like a bridge went out, that, this is well to be used, it would have to be used to rebuild the bridge.
Or if the levee had failed, we wouldn't need this money, right?
If the levee had failed, all the money in the world ain't going to fix our homes. And no, you wouldn't use that money, because FEMA would be involved, it would just...
Well, you'd have to cover the... FEMA's a reimbursement.
Right. I understand that, but it's just...
What I'm saying that...
I understand having a nest day, but how much is enough, guys? How much is enough that you're going to really feel good about it? Is it twice what we have? You never can have enough.
I think what we have, I don't...
I think what we have is good.
In every other city, we have more. I don't think we need to worry about building it. I think we can spend our...
And serve the citizens.
Perryville is obviously considerably bigger than us.
We need to look, our tax revenue's not filling up, our costs are going up. At some point in time, there's going to be a meeting of the expenses and the income, exactly. And that's why I keep saying we need to look at efficiencies, not because I want to put money in the bank or sit on a big pile of money, it's just to be efficient at what we do, don't do anything other cities in our size and area do. You know, we just need to be compliant and stuff, but, I mean, having money in the bank's not a bad thing and stuff, because you never know what could happen.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, I can't see it going any higher, but we just maintain what we got.
Well, then, we've been gaining every year.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
We're going in the right direction.
Yeah.
And we're going to continue to go in the right direction. There's a lot of good things happening, and I really believe they will, so... And if that's what you guys want to worry at night, then do it. I'm not, I'm really not. Then you've been in this town for how long?
64 years.
64 years. You've probably seen it at its worst, and is it better than it was?
I'd say so.
Okay, very good. And I suspect 20 years from now, your son will be saying the same thing if he's sitting on this board, so...
I hope so.
And that just don't... I guess I think of things a little bit different, and just... You can have a catastrophe, I understand that, but things are going to be all right. And we can, and you guys, we can make decisions, and if you really want some people yelling at you, we could cut some budgets. You can explore this. This whole discussion started because one of the aldermen said something about cutting out the tourism. If you want to do that, do it. It's just, it's rushing, you know, take a chance with it. But it's a chance I'm not willing to take, because I don't care what anybody says, it's bringing money in, and that's what we need to be doing, you know, and so...
Well, Paul, you was at that meeting with Tim Good, and his comment about cutting out tourism was not popular.
No, it was not popular. All you had to do was beat... I'm tired of beating that... To me, that's a... You guys decide what you want. The only decision I'll have to make is if it's split right down the middle, so you guys decide, you know? I just, I think we're... And Bryant, we want to spend more money? Yeah, let's spend it on streets. I have no problem with that.
Well, what I'm getting at, or what I was trying to relay here, is percentage-wise, and we have a considerably higher reserve than every single person, people or every municipality here, at what point is it... I'm not saying it's a waste, for lack of better terms, that's kind of how it came off, but at what point do we're going to not touch it, we're going to take the taxpayer dollar, we're not going to touch it, what are we going to do with it? Do we have, is it just a nest day? Because, you know, when we're sitting in an emergency fund, but according to, you know, when we put us next to everybody else, our emergency fund is considerably higher percentage-wise to our operating budget than everyone else.
But our percentage has to be higher, just like Troy Howard said, the entity, the...
Yeah, but how much higher? I mean, I mean...
But if you look at our reserve...
We're sitting at...
The bridge costs the same here as it costs in Perry County if it needs to be replaced. If 10% of their budget will cover that bridge, and it takes 80% of our budget to cover that exact same bridge, the percentages will be different.
Right.
The percentages don't mean squat. You know, 10% to them is probably more than our entire budget is.
Is there any of these municipalities on here that are similar to... Obviously, Sykesville's considerably bigger, I guess, I don't know, Carthage.
They're all bigger than us.
Yeah.
They're just the ones that responded to my request. And Smithville, I don't know about. The question about the funding of the public safety referendum is it's a dedicated fund, it's there every year, regardless of what happens anywhere else in the economy, or business revenue goes down, or whatever, so you can fund those positions with the knowledge that it will be there unless property taxes values decline. So it's not sales tax dependent. So whatever else we're doing, in terms of reserves, whatever next year has to hold with regard to revenues versus our expenditures, you have the confidence that that commitment can be met. And I think that was our... That was the intent, and that was what was accomplished. So Eric can hire police people, and he can say, here's the deal, and this is what you can pay, and you can expect that, and people will come to work for us and stay working for us because they have that served.
Okay.
Yeah. Do we need to build our reserves? And I think we're there.
No, I think we're there.
I think we're there.
Whatever revenues we project, we can spend for whatever activities this board chooses to spend for. As long as there's a reserve, our cash position.
And it's our job to make the plan. So I think we're actually in kind of almost a violent agreement here. I think we are actually at the point where we're saying we are over 50% in emergency fund reserve, so we can start taking that money back and putting it into repairs and things like that. Is that where I'm... Are we on the same page here? Do you all feel that we have enough in reserve right now at $1 million?
Yes.
Yes, I do too.
Is it $1 million, is it 1.5, or was it?
It's $1 million.
At 50%, it would be $938,500. So we have over 50% in reserve. I'm comfortable with that, and I like Bryant's idea and Martin's suggestion, that now we can start putting that money back into our community to make it better roads, better everything. I think that's what I heard. And we're going to look at the budget, and we're going to make sure everything's ticking blue, we trust our management, we're always going to look for places to shave, if we can find it, great, if not, whatever. But I think we're on a good... I think we're on a good pace here.
So even with the loss of our rental property, that $125,000 a year, where...
You know, we got along without it before we had it. We're going to get along without it. it. It may, it may affect the, kind of the fund balance at the end of the year. Yeah. She's, we're gonna prepare a budget that doesn't have that dollar figure in it, so you're gonna see how we can, decide how we should spend the, the revenues we anticipate, so it won't, shouldn't affect our operations.
So that probably did contribute to our building our surplus up.
And we may, and we may, in the next 90 days, wanna consider not spending money we spent last year in order to preserve the value that we have in the reserves, I mean, we'll have to see how that works out.
But, back to our previous conversation, we also don't want the reserve account to be static either. We want to.
I think it beyond, growing it beyond a certain point, though, is counterproductive and.
But, is that, well, and I understand that, but is that counterproductive to, I mean, is that gonna hurt us in the long run too, when we have to get another rating or whatever, that we haven't contributed nothing or very little to that? I mean, let's go back to the bridge replacement thing, if we have to replace a bridge, a million dollars isn't gonna cover a bridge. A million dollars wouldn't have covered the water tower. You know, I mean, we got a lot of.
The tower worked out.
Yeah.
That's a pretty good deal, that water tower.
Well, no, what I'm saying is, is.
That's what I said. We don't worry about replacing a bridge, and I get a bridge could fail, but if that's what you want to worry about, I.
Well, that's what our reserves are supposed to be for.
I understand that, but.
But, I remember back some years ago, the county did, they saved way too much money, and there was something, the state come down and said, no, you need to start spending some money, but they were really.
Actually, we're gonna get money from the Bridge and Road Fund in the county year after next. So, because they don't have any bridge needs, they're still getting their credits at the state level for bridge replacement, they don't have any bridges to replace, so they're banking that anticipation of making it available to the city for, for bridge work. Now, what they anticipate doing is the South Creek Bridge.
Yeah.
This bridge here, this right opposite city.
All right, well, we will proceed along those lines, so I have a minute, do you want to talk about demolition?
Yeah. I had some calls from somebody asking why the building on Market Street was torn down and it wasn't approved by the board members. That illness was changed in, what, 2018, Martin? Before, every demolition permit had to be approved by the board. And I think it was Randy Rizika that wanted to cut that down from 60 days to 30 days. My question was, what, what, anyway, what happened, I found out, was in 2015, this is the old historic boundary, what's in blue here? Well, at one time, when there was another person that had Dave's job, this whole thing was considered historic district. So a lot of people that were in the historic district are no longer in the historic district.
The National Historic District is the blue.
Yes.
National Historic Boundary is everything.
But you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, but the question is, do the design guidelines apply to construction or outside of the blue? Prior administrator was doing that.
Right.
That's why we, when we changed from the Landmarks Commission to the Heritage Commission, we clarified that.
Right.
And adopted a standard that only required a certificate of appropriation, of appropriate list, outside of the blue, if the structure is within 180 feet of a historic building structure. So, that's that.
I'm satisfied now that once I learned all that, but it was, it was a struggle.
Question is whether or not you want to go back to having the board consider all demolition permits. I think the compromise here is that we, David and I, do a better job of letting you know when a demolition permit has been issued for a visible structure, not for somebody's.
And the permit itself still had that little check mark on the bottom.
Well, it's because you still may have to get.
But not on every one of them.
No, so we're gonna, we're gonna have two permits.
Okay.
One with and one without.
Right, gotcha. I'm satisfied now.
And we will inform you when a visible structure, like the one on Market Street, or the Point Building.
The Point.
Is being taken down, so you just don't get to ask questions about something you didn't know, so we're just making sure you get better communication from us. Which is something I've been accused of doing well in the past, because I tend to just take care of it. Let's just keep doing it.
Well, both places that have been demolished has made a big difference.
Oh, yeah, that, yeah, absolutely.
You know, they look nice.
And Rotary is working on a grant in cooperation with the owners of the Point to, to take their, their property there and put a monument up, it's a welcome, it's gonna be, it's gonna be brick columns with, it's gonna be, it's gonna be nice.
Because the state still owns a majority of that.
Well, we're, yes, but there's some confusion about that. I don't think, there's no confusion in my mind, I know where it has to go, but there was some communication that the reader misunderstood what was being communicated about where the state writer put it, but that's been, that's been clarified. Okay, well, then you got time before the next meeting?